Of the city of LaGrange, we will begin with an invocation to be offered by Reverend LW Booker of St. James Baptist Church, to be followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Will you please stand?
That's right. Shall we pray? Eternal God, our heavenly Father, we thank you for this gathering of champions who are responsible for being the caretakers of our community. Pray, our God, that you would allow us to be sincere, open-minded, receptive to truth. Bless our leadership and bless our officials, our police department who protect us. We thank you for this day and for all of your kindness. Truly, you've been good to us, and we honor you and we celebrate you because you've given us the privilege of prayer, call upon your name even in times like these. Bless these who will make decisions for us, that they might be appropriate and appreciated. And our Father, when we have done with the business of living down here and we look forward to transitioning to a better world, receive us is our prayer. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Booker. Council members have all been given a copy of the minutes of the regular council meeting held on January the 12th. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Tonight, we have a public hearing to receive comments on the comprehensive plan update.
Mr. Mayor, State Council, this public hearing has been properly advertised at this point. We would take any public input on our cop plan.
Is there anybody in council chambers who would like to be heard on the comprehensive plan update? Okay, I don't see any volunteers for that, but before I close the public hearing, I would like to ask if I could, Mark Costle to come forward or Paul Gerald from Three Rivers
We're gonna do a dynamic duo.
To present the, to present the plan and particularly to recognize any members of your committee that are, that are with us.
Absolutely, thank you Mayor.
Thank you Mayor. The committee members that are with us here this evening are Councilman Arrington, Assistant City Manager Bullock, Nate Crawford with Dash and Alton West with the City of LaGrange.
Good, thank you for all being here.
Yeah, they're a great group and it's good to be in front of you guys again. This is my first official public meeting that I've been to since March. So it's, it's great to be back in front of our local governments again and as part of the Regional Commission. And so we, this is our five-year update. You know, DCA requires a five-year update of every comprehensive plan in the state. And we have just completed yours and it's always a great group to work with. And the plan, I believe, is going to be available online for people to kind of go through and look at and see what ideas that we've come up with as a committee. And this, this plan will last you another five years. And I think we've captured a lot of the momentum that happened in the previous five-year update. So there wasn't a whole lot of public input due to the COVID-19 situation, but feel, please feel free to check it out online and give us any kind of feedback that you may have. And we'll be glad to, to take that into account.
Well, thank you. Thank you both for your hard work. Certainly thank all the members of the committee for their work. I would ask, obviously, we have the public hearing tonight. What is the schedule for adoption of the, of the plan?
Should occur probably in February. We'll wait to get the official okay from DCA, but we hope to have a, a review by, from them by the end of February where you can adopt at your second meeting in February.
Okay.
Yeah, at this point, February the 23rd is the council meeting. We hope to have that on, on the agenda for.
For adoption, yes sir. Councilman Gaskin.
I, I have a question. I think I asked you this earlier, but I just want to clarify publicly. I was questioning the census information that you got. How did you guys come up with the city of LaGrange growing by a thousand people in 10 years?
So none of the information that we have gathered has been really overly analyzed. This is just purely from the Census American Community Survey estimates. Not any of our, I don't believe any of the city staff or the Regional Commission staff did any kind of analysis on future of population projections. So it's basically just grabbing what we can from the census.
Okay, and, and I guess my other question is, is this in line with all the other counties? Or the other cities, Ms. Valleys, I should say?
Councilman, I'm, I'm sitting here looking at the comprehensive plan and we're showing an estimated population in 2019 because, as you know, the 2020 census data is not available, is 30,400. For comparison purposes, in 2010, we had a population based upon those census results of 29,588. So we're slightly less than 5,000 increase over 10 years.
So, so just, so the census does an annual estimate of population. So even though there's a, even though there's a 10-year census, official census, every year, the Census Bureau puts out a revised estimate of what they think the population is. And that's what that figure is coming from, so.
I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, does this plan have any room to change after the actual hard numbers come out?
Oh, sure, sure. I mean, you can amend it anytime.
Okay.
You can amend it anytime.
This is basically a guide that we kind of look back at and say, oh, we're in line or not.
State law requires us every five years to do this comprehensive plan and to update it. So we'll have to do this again in five years, but we could do it sooner if we chose to do so.
Okay.
But, but we, we just have to go through this process again. It's a statutory process that we're required, yeah.
Fine, that's all I need to know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank y'all very much. Is anybody else in council chambers who would like to be heard on the comprehensive plan update? Okay, if not, I will declare the public hearing closed and we will move on to reports. Do any council members have anything to report tonight?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. My report is on the Truth County Health Department and is, it is with much disappointment that I make this report tonight to this distinguished council and to the staff. This council appointed me on the Truth County Board of Health many years ago to be your representative. I have served faithfully as a board member and even the chairman of the board. During this pandemic, I have received many updates from the District Four concerning the spread of this virus. And I say thanks to District Four. However, I have not been pleased as to the distribution of this virus in our community. I have received many calls and inquiries asking how they can receive the vaccine. The number that I have been given, the, the number that I have been giving out and the website has not been successful to the people of LaGrange and Truth County. This is a pandemic and we need better communications from our health department. The people need a number by which they can get some type of results. 762-888-8180 tells you if you want English to press 1. You press 1, if you want English to press 1. If you want English to press 1, it continues to say that. The website is not very friendly to work with. I have some people say to me that they have called over 400 times trying to make an appointment. This is unacceptable. We are a council, we represent the city of LaGrange. I represent the city of LaGrange on this board. If it's overwhelming for them, they need to tell somebody and we need some help to give them some help. We need these people vaccinated. Number one, they're giving the vaccination out at the bus barn. I'm frustrated, I, I hope you can hear this in my voice. I'm frustrated because counties around us are doing much better. And I know that Truth County should be the leading county, we're the leading county in District Four. And we should be leading in getting this vaccine out to the people in LaGrange, Georgia. I understand that the hospital is going to be getting the vaccine. Home Drug Store is going to be getting the vaccine. But we have people that's in their 80s and 90s that's trying to get it. And they are not computer savvy. They do not know how to use a, a good telephone when, when all this calls, press this and press that. We need better and we deserve better. And I'm demanding better for our citizens. Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you, Councilman Edmondson. And certainly, I know that all the other council members as well as myself have, have heard those same concerns and complaints and we have shared those with the state, with District Four, the, the public health department, which is charged with administering, with delivering the majority of the vaccine. As you mentioned, there are other providers doing it as well. I know that our communication staff has been working closely with the Department of Public Health and their staff to try to get the word out. But you, you are absolutely correct that it is unacceptable that, that people who want the vaccine, and I'm glad people want it. I'm, I'm actually glad that as many people want the vaccine as they do. It's unacceptable that they don't have the, the ability to receive it. Let's keep up the pressure, let's keep up the, the communication and try to get that word out. I, I have, through Wellstar and District Four, we have arranged a Facebook Live Roundtable Discussion tomorrow at 2 o'clock that will feature local physicians as well as staff from District Four to talk about the vaccine and to talk about other opportunities for people to receive it and how to get the word out and how to navigate that system. But I share your frustration, I think the council all shares your frustration and appreciate you, you bringing that to the attention of, of the public. Other council members have anything to report tonight?
Have a question. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Councilman Edmondson, for your passion and taking this pandemic serious and representing the people of this community and protecting them. And I also like to thank the entire council for protecting this community and taking it as serious as we have, trying to save people. My report is about the utility cutoff. I got the update from Meg, Meg Kelsey today, well, yesterday actually, saying that the money that we waived, well, we didn't waive it. We allowed people to pay down their utility bills and not cut them off. At its peak was $600,000 roughly, more than a half a million, north of a half a million. I am pleased to report that it is down now to around less than $60,000, which is fantastic. I heard a report today that utility cutoffs and the spread of the virus, they were noticing were going hand in hand. So the fact that we didn't cut people's utility off during the, during this crises may have very, may, may have actually saved lives. So I want to thank each and every one of you for taking it serious. I know that we discussed it at some length as to how long and whether we should or shouldn't. Would the people take advantage of it? You know, would they abuse it? All those questions came into play and the people of this community took it serious. They lived up to their obligations and I agree with Dr. Edmondson when he says that the people deserve better. Damn right they did. They really do deserve better because there are a lot of other things that they could have done with their money. But they lived up to their obligations of paying down debt to this city and now we have a debt to pay them and that's to get them the vaccine. So I would like to bring all resources to bear to make sure that happens for this population. Again, like you said, we're in a pandemic and I need everybody, everywhere to care. I thank you for having these town hall meetings. I thank you for initiating them, instigating them, calling around, getting people to participate. And we are leaders in this, in this region. And the people of this community deserve much better than the services they're receiving from the health department right now. Thank you, that's in my report.
Well, thank you, Councilman Gaskin, and I echo your sentiments about the utility cutoff. It was a good report that we received from the city manager and I appreciate you staying on top of that. I, and I definitely think that this council did the right thing during the pandemic when we did waive the cutoffs and waive the late fees and extend the, extend the repayment schedule and adopt that for people, you know, during the, during the time of the pandemic. And it's, it's proved, as you say, that the, the people have appreciated that and have also lived up to the obligation to, to repay over time. So it's, it's a good report and I appreciate you highlighting that for us. Any other council members have anything they would like to report on or highlight for us tonight?
Glad to have Reverend McCamey back.
We're delighted to have Reverend McCamey back, so.
We really need that.
We're, and glad he's back and doing well. Okay, well, let's move on to city manager report because we have several items to act upon.
Yes, sir, Mayor. We had a long discussion this morning at work session about violent crime and ways that we can combat that through prevention and through enforcement efforts. So items 1 through 4 listed here, kind of deal with both the prevention side of the house and enforcement efforts to help address some trends that we've seen recently as it relates to violent crime. So I'll just go through.
We'll just take them one at a time, yeah.
One at a time and let you vote on what you'd like to do moving forward with these different initiatives. So the first is, we have received a funding request from Alternatives to Violence Program. Basically talked through Phase 1, which would be in this budget year cycle. That Phase 1 project was $15,000, roughly $900. I guess we need some action, council, if we wanted to approve this.
Motor approved.
Second.
So I have a motion and second to approve the, and this would be a mid-year budget adjustment. And it would be subject to all the standard rules that the city manager has for oversight and audit and report, you know, 501(c)(3) determinations, et cetera. So all of that is, is built into the request, but it would be a $15,900 for the Alternatives to Violence Project. To have a motion and second, is there any discussion? Motion, second to approve, is there any discussion?
A little discussion.
Yes, sir.
Just a little discussion. We heard quite a few programs. Which ones are included in this, all of them?
So this is the Phase 1 where they discussed Phase 1.
This is all three?
Program is one of them.
Yes, it's one program, but there's three components.
There are three different phases of the one program.
I'm, I'm looking at Lee Jones in the back and she's nodding her head.
This is your presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, this is.
Phase 1 has three separate programs.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So yeah, this is, this is the, the presentation that Ms. Jones and Ms. Harris.
I'm right here.
Oh, I didn't see you over there.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so I have a motion second to approve. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Okay, that passes unanimously. All right, we will move on to the funding request from Greater Achievement Blueprint for Leadership.
This is the program that Dr. Dowell brought forward with a refunding request of $25,000.
Motor approved.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
No.
Okay, so with the.
I'm still thinking.
Okay, with, well, with the division, I'm, I'm gonna give you one second to think and then I'm gonna ask for a show of hands so I can count, because I can't hear six voices at one time, so.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a?
Let's discuss.
Statement first?
You may, yes, sir.
There was a statement made today concerning an issue, which is this issue that was not, I was not pleased with and it troubled me deeply. I had to check it out for myself. While I may not agree with a person's view politically or how one views another, I deal with facts and I look at the ability of an individual to do an effective job. I discovered that the article that was presented to us today had nothing in it that referred to police department or any other police department as terrorists. I do feel that these two organizations, I feel that we have too much violence going on in our streets of LaGrange and we need to do, need some way to change the course of our young men and women. I believe that these two organizations that have presented themselves to us will try their very best to turn the lives of our children around to make a better LaGrange. That is why I put that into motion.
May I respond?
We're here for discussion.
Okay.
Yes, so absolutely.
I don't know how you don't understand how what I said today was not accurate because I'm looking at it as we speak right here on Mr. Glenn Dowell's website. It says, "We must call terrorists what they are." And it's a picture of a police officer holding a gun next to a target beside somebody holding a sign that says, "Black Lives Matter." That in itself is inflammatory toward police officers. If you'll just scroll down his page, you can find multiple inflammatory remarks on his website. This is not the type of people we should be giving taxpayer-funded money to.
Those were personal views politically.
Politically. This reflects on his, this reflects on his thinking. And if he's going to be teaching these kids inflammatory things, why do we need that?
Any other council members have any comments?
Yeah, I have a comment and then I, I guess I need to vote, don't I?
Well, I'm gonna call, I'm, I'm gonna have a new vote because I didn't know, I couldn't tell who voted for what, so.
Okay. I share Dr. Edmondson's point of view as well as Mr. Mitchell's point of view. And I'm torn between the situation because I've been at these murder scenes. I've held the fathers. I've cried with the fathers. And for leadership in this community or any community to use the blood of black men to further their, their agendas, I take issue to. I also take issue to the fact that we don't have a lot of programs out there already trying to turn this around. I know Dr. Dowell said that he has proven results, but as a leader in this community to make foolish statements on Facebook like some sort of, like some sort of child, I take issue to. We've got adults around here who post inflammatory things and then get upset when our children do inflammatory things. We don't need to blame the children for the violence in the community. We don't need to blame the young people for the violence in the community. We need, look no further than the mirror. We have to lead by examples. I don't care if it was a personal point of view. I don't care if it was a congregational point of view. I don't care what it was. We have to lead by example in this community. I'm setting a bad one by taking my mask down, but I'm, I'm actually upset because, again, we have young men out here who are dying at an alarming rate. Please, understand that we have a pandemic afoot, but also understand that we have an epidemic afoot, an epidemic of violence. Words matter. I don't care whether you're black, whether you're white, Christian, Jew, Republican, Democrat, agnostic. I don't care. The children are watching. Grow up. And that goes for everybody because I've heard some other things out there from some people who've been on some other boards and directors. Grow up. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you, Councilman Gaskin. Anybody else have anything they'd like to say before I call for a show of hands?
Mayor, I'd just like to, just to give my opinion on, on this. I, I agree totally with Dr. Edmondson. I also agree with Mark, Nathan. But I also know that these murders, these, these shootings, they, they, they hit home because it's in our city.
Yes.
And to sit back and do nothing, I think we're, I think we're wrong to do that. Maybe this program only reaches two kids, three kids, I don't know. The other programs have been validated. I talked, I talked to chief earlier this afternoon and he says that there are results in the other programs that, that he does. So that's why I'm, I'm for funding it, is, is I don't want to sit back and do nothing.
Maybe I'm wrong, but I think that Dr. Dowell does have some sort of relationship with the chief.
He does.
And.
The chief expressed support for the program in, in the morning session, but I think also, I, you know, obviously had the concern about the Facebook posts and so forth, but still expressed concern for the, for the, for the funding. Lots of y'all weren't at our morning session this morning. We spent a lot of time in our work session. So you may think that there is a lot of unusual passion and intensity, but this was the entire topic basically of our work session this morning. And, and the, the point of the discussion was that, that we have had, we have had violence in the community, we've had violence nationwide. We know that the national murder rate in 2020 went up by the greatest increase it's been in decades. We also saw that LaGrange went from four to seven homicides last year. Yes, we're still in the single digits and that's a good thing, but that trend is unacceptable. And so one of the things that the council discussed this morning was that we have to respond in some way. We cannot change the probation or the parole system. We cannot change the court system. We cannot make criminal laws, that's all the province of the state. We can't adjust trends on a national level because all we're, all we have authority over is LaGrange. But we do have resources that we can deploy locally to both prevent and then to, to prevent crime and then to enforce the law. And so we, we, we had a lot of discussion that this is not an either/or situation. This is a both and. We both have to invest resources in prevention. And we heard from two organizations that offered us plans to invest in our local community on the prevention side. And then we heard from the chief about some ways to enhance the law enforcement side. And so those were discussions that we had, robust discussions. Obviously, these are very, when, when you see this council, not just, not just, you know, all, all unanimous, we're almost unanimous probably 99% of the time with all, with very little discussion. And when you see us actually discussing things, it, it's both that there are differences of opinion, but it's also that we care deeply. And all six of these council members and as well as myself, as well as our staff, we all care deeply about this community. And we want this community to be trending in a positive direction. We know that we have limitations, but when we have resources that we can deploy that we feel like will make a difference, it may just be marginal. It may be incremental, but if it's moving us in the right direction, it's something that, that, that I feel like we, we should support. Having said that, we, we all get, we all get individual votes. Having said that, we, we all get, we all get individual votes, and we all get to decide for ourselves what to support and what priorities to make. But I appreciate the, the fact that we all can discuss these things and that we can share our concerns and that we do so, and we still leave as, as friends and colleagues. And I think.
We all want what's best for LaGrange.
Because I think, I think, you know, Councilman Edmondson, you're right. We all want what's best for LaGrange, and, and we all have the same goals in mind. We, we may have different ways of getting there, and that's fine. That's part of what democracy is all about, and that's something that we should all celebrate as well. Do any other council members have any comments they would like to make before I call for the vote?
Dr. Gore? You're the only one that has to say anything. That's okay. I know, I know how I'm gonna vote. No comment.
We've paid this over a twelve-month period of time.
Right, so it would actually be.
Between two budget cycles. Yes, sir.
So if, we have a motion and a second to approve the funding request. If you would approve the request, please uplift the right hand. Okay?
Question.
Let me, let me finish the vote before we begin. Okay, all right, thank you. If you would oppose the funding request, please uplift the right hand.
No.
Okay? So the funding request will pass by a vote of five to one. And now a point of order or question?
I'm sorry, did Meg say that we were voting on funding it for just this fiscal year, not?
No, no, we approved the full.
I was just saying it'll be spread out over the calendar year.
So we approved it for both fiscal years.
So we'll pay it on a monthly basis for the calendar year at twenty-one.
Okay.
Right, so it was, it was, it was unusual, but the funding request from Alternatives to Violence followed our fiscal year.
Right.
Through June thirty. The Greater, Greater Achievement request was a calendar year request, but the city manager has discretion as, as in budget to allocate that between the budget cycles. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay.
Normally, when we approve a funding request, the city manager sometimes will fund that all at once, and sometimes she'll spread it over time depending on the, the cash flow.
And, and if I could ask the city manager, if you should hear about any inflammatory remarks coming from this group or anyone affiliated with this group, do we as a council reserve the right to pull that funding?
So once the funds have, once the funds have left the city, you cannot recover them, I don't think. But you could always, if the funds have not been paid at any time, you could always amend.
You're paying them by the month, right?
You could amend that.
But you're paying them per month.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So you could stop it at any time.
That's very typical with most agencies, that we pay them over a twelve-month period for those appropriations that you made.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we have that, that control.
Okay. Okay, and so we talked, those were, those were two presentations regarding the prevention side of the House. Then we also heard from the chief that in some of the latest incidents, he had actually been caught short, if you will, in terms of coverage. Ms. Kelsey and you?
Yes, sir. So he requested five additional police officers to add to our current force. This will impact our current budget a little bit, but the majority of it'll take us time to recruit people, to go through the process of hiring, to get them into the academy. So it's gonna take a little bit of time. There may be some lag in twenty-one for the expenses of that, but the majority, sorry, the majority of those expenses will hit in the new fiscal year, so we'll budget for those appropriately if the council chooses to move forward without initiative.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion?
Yes, there is discussion. Now, I remember during the budget process, Mark Mitchell asked if the chief had enough officers, and his reply was yes. So now we're having to go back and look at this again, right? I'm just making sure that.
So I think the question was not so much about authorized positions but filled positions. Is that, is that, was that correct? Were there vacancies?
I just, I remember asking him if he, because of the, we were talking about the crime because he's there. I asked him if he had enough patrol officers or if he needed enough detectives. Did he need anything?
Gotcha. I did not.
That was the way it was said, I think.
I think in his budget request to me, he asked for two, but.
But you told him no.
But I told him no. So he did ask me for two officers, but I did not add those to our.
I'm not, I'm not sure the council appreciates this, but, but every year when we go through the budget in May, Ms. Kelsey has previously gone through the budget with every department head, and every department head always asks for more things, and sometimes Ms. Kelsey just nips that in the bud, and it never comes to us. And then, and then she make, the budget is actually her recommendation. It's not the chief's recommendation. It's not any department head's recommendation. The budget that we review in May is actually the city manager's recommendation after she has gone through all of that with all of the various agencies. So that's just a one little minor point of clarification, but, so I have a motion and a second to approve the funding for the additional officers. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. That passes unanimously. And then we also had a request to increase the funding through the police budget for the district attorney's office.
So we currently have funding in this year's budget to help in the capacity of gang prosecution, and we've funded that for several years. We've been asked by the DA to increase that to twenty-five thousand dollars.
By twenty-five thousand?
I'm sorry, by twenty-five thousand.
Bringing it to a total of?
One hundred.
May we approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the request. Any discussion?
This discussion I do remember. We asked for access to a list of suspected gang members. Well, not suspected. They said vetted and confirmed gang members in the city, and they have not surrendered it.
They being the district attorney's office?
Being the district attorney's office. It wasn't a.
Yeah.
It was, it was done over there at, at Great Wolf. Now, given in light of what has happened here in DC, I wanna know if any of those gang members were up there in DC. I wanna know who exactly are they considering to be gang members? I have a problem with what is perceived as a threat and what is not. I know we need to do something to curb the violence, but keeping secret lists of black men and women in this community is not one of them.
So what, I remember that discussion with the district attorney. What I would ask, Ms. Kelsey, is that if you will reach out to the district attorney and ask, and perhaps the, I'm, I'm guessing that for prosecutorial reasons, it might be advantageous for, for him to meet individually with the council members that are interested in that particular issue, but, but we will definitely follow, if you will follow up with Mr. Cranford on that, on that request from Mr. Gaskin.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor, oh, so we have a motion and a second to approve the request for the increased funding. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. That passes.
No. That's me.
Okay, so do I have any other noes? Okay, so that passes by a vote of five to one. Okay, um, okay, well, let's, let's continue with the city manager report about the property.
I just have one more report, and there is no action item required by council, but as a matter of update, you know, we have been working diligently on the new park that we're placing Union Street Park that's gonna be located over off of McGregor Street area. In doing so, there was some property that Kathy owned that, one of the, both of them were basically parking lots that we felt like we needed to acquire for park development. So we have acquired those. The cost was about five thousand dollars. It was minimal, so we have acquired that and just wanted to bring that to your attention. Look forward to in the coming months putting that project out to bid. We're about ninety percent on drawings now, so I'm very excited about that and look forward to sharing more information in the future for drawings and this type of plan.
That's both a great report and a great new addition to the park system.
May I ask this? Is that, just for the public, the reason for that is that the Union Street Park will be taken as part of the.
It has been taken by the DOT, yes, sir.
So, so it's like we've lost a park, so now we're restoring a park in a different location.
And it's not, it's not very far from the current, from that site, so we're excited to be in the neighborhood still, and we understand how important that park has been to that community, and so it was a priority once we knew that we needed to do that transaction with the DOT to sell that property.
Yeah, once, once, once the long-awaited Hamilton Road widening project got underway, it's been awaited for, for thirty years or, or thereabouts. Now that that's underway, this is to, to replace exactly the Frank Cox Union Street Park, which there will be a remnant of the Frank Cox Union Street Park. A small remnant will be left, but not nearly the space that it was, and, but, but this new park down by Caulfield will be, will have a lot more, have a lot more amenities.
Mr. Mayor, I want to, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Meg and the staff for doing that, because they could have just not done it, done anything, but for just looking in the community not too far, because that is a well-used park, and so she's found somewhere else that this area can be used as well for our, our community. So, and again, I say our community because it's not District Two, but it's our community. And so people from all over the community, they come and use that park, so I wanna thank Meg and her staff for looking out and doing that because it's well-used.
Yeah. You know, I, I think that Ms. Kelsey deserves credit for that particular project and the staff, but also for just reimagining our entire parks.
Yes.
Because if one, COVID has been terrible, and there is nothing good about COVID, but if one thing we have learned from COVID is the importance of outdoor recreation space, outdoor green space, outdoor park space, trails, it was, it was quite timely that we had some of those in place, some of the thread segments and other things, but I think it has, it has further demonstrated how, how important parks and green space are to any community to maintain that sense of vibrancy even in very difficult times. And so I'm, I'm very pleased about this project of Hamilton Road, and I'm pleased about other projects that are in the pipeline that the city staff has been working on as part of the comprehensive plan and the parks plan. So I, I, I join the, the thing, the gratitude, the word of gratitude to Ms. Kelsey and her staff. Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Kelsey?
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Under first reading of ordinances, we have a, an ordinance modifying the durational requirements for transient merchants.
An ordinance of mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the code of the city to modify the durational requirements for transient merchants selling produce to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
And then under second reading of ordinances, we have an ordinance to annex to the city contiguous real property located at Seventy-One Bush Drive.
An ordinance of mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to annex to the city contiguous real property located at Seventy-One Bush Drive to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
Motion approved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. That passes unanimously. And we have a second reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning map for property to be annexed into the city located at Seventy-One Bush Drive.
An ordinance of mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the zoning map and ordinance of the city so as to classify the used zone of real estate to be annexed into the city located on Bush Drive to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
Motion approved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. That passes unanimously. Ms. Van Schor, would you like to close us?
Yes, we have done our best to try to support for the COVID effort, the pandemic. I know that we've had some struggles, but we stand that we are very proud to collaborate with our community partners to support and communicate as much as we can. On Friday, the city and the county worked with Bill Honeycutt, who's here, and Barbie Watts in feeding the front lines at the Vaccine Clinic for District Four Public Health. We created a video for District Four Public Health, letting the community know what to expect for the Vaccine Clinic. And tomorrow, of course, our mayor's gonna be hosting the Facebook Live roundtable discussion, and just wanted to let y'all know that we are committed and will do whatever it takes to support this effort because it is very important, but we're proud to collaborate with, with everybody. We, we stand, you know, very open and transparent with this, so we're here to support as much as we can.
Thank you, Ms. Van Schor and your staff for all that you've done to, to get the word out during the, during the pandemic. We stand adjourned.